Good evening. It is 5:30 and I'd like to call to order the October 26, 2021 Richland School Board Meeting of Board of Trustees. May I please have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to convene in executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals and a breach of contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we will call for the vote. Is everybody up electronically? No, we'll just do, we'll do a hand vote. That was you, Mr. McFadden? Or that was you, Dr. Scott? Okay, we'll do a hand vote. Okay? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We will move into executive session. It is now 6:30. May I have a motion to please come out of executive session?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
Please allow the record to reflect. I move that executive session ended at 5:48 PM.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Um, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote electronically. Motion passes unanimously. We will now move into our inspirational moment and the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Mackey.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
In an effort to allow students to showcase their talent or things in their heart during executive set, during inspirational moment, this board meeting, we've had a volunteer from Leila Williams, who is a senior at the Palmetto Center for the Arts at Richland Northeast High School. And she's actually provided a PowerPoint to some of her pieces of art and she has an introduction and just to share some of her awards at PCA. She's the 2021 National Scholastic Gold Key winner, 2021 Scholastic Regional winner, 2020 National Scholastic Silver Key winner, 2020 Regional Scholastic Gold Key, Silver Key in Photography and Digital Art, third place photography, SC State Fair 2021, and in 2019, won third place in the 2nd District in the South Carolina State Fair. And she has a bit of an introduction that she would like to share with us before we get into some of her works of art that she has asked to share this evening.
My name is Leila Williams and I am a senior in the Visual Arts Department at Richland Northeast High School. For my sustained investigation, I wanted to show my interpretation of historical black women. Each self-portrait is modeled after a specific female figure. I wanted to do a concentration that not only represents myself, but the many challenges that black women have faced through time. Through my depiction of different time periods, I show how far we've come in society due to our own efforts to make change. I hope you all enjoy my art and look forward to seeing my completed sustained investigation. Some of the awards that I've won are the Scholastic Gold and Silver Medal in 2020 and 2021. I also won third place in photography at the state fair. Thank you.
And she's not here this evening, so we'll just go through a couple of, a few of her slides, just maybe, uh, maybe a couple of seconds on each one, one or two seconds on each slide that she wanted to share. Mr. Kenyon? helping to coordinate some of the efforts of students who are anxious to, who are willing to share their talent at school board meetings. And just one of the quotes that she lives by that I appreciate, it says that "every child is an artist. The problem is how to remain an artist once we grow up." A quote by Pablo Picasso. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mackey. But I wanted to reiterate to our general public that there is a, one thing that I wanted to do this year and I asked the board to help me with, especially Ms. Mackey and Ms. McFadden. I asked them to coordinate this year because we have so much talent here in Richland School District 2 that I wanted to, instead of doing all an inspirational moment where we just talk all the time, I wanted to start bringing in students to exit, do their talents in front of the camera so people could see the talent that we have here. So, saying that, if there's anybody listening today that would like to showcase your child's talent, who is a part of Richland School District 2, please let myself know, Ms. Mackey know, or Ms. McFadden know. Because that's a, it's really important that the kids get a chance to shine. So if there's any talent out there, musical, singing, dancing, cheerleading, Ms. McFadden, or any of those other things like that, please let us know. Because it's hard for us to get, know who's, who it is, but this is a big effort that we want to do this year. I know y'all tired of just having speakers speak. So I wanted to bring the kids back into the boardroom. And so, thank you for that, Ms. Mackey.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes.
Is it possible that they can let any one of the board members know if they want to share something?
Um, as a matter of fact, Dr. Elkins, they ha, they can. But what I'd like for you to do is, once you get that information, can you coordinate with Ms. Mackey and Ms. McFadden?
Absolutely.
Yes, since they're, they're heading that up.
That would be great. Just any board member would be okay.
I appreciate that. Thank you. No problem with that at all. Okay, moving on, Ms. Mackey.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If you all would join me and rise as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I'm so loud. I don't really, I probably don't even need this, but, okay, may I please have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the October 26, 2021 regular board meeting agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's lots of seconds. Okay, Dr. Cheryl Caution-Parker, I heard you first. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Ms., I mean, Dr. Scott.
Are we also approving the minutes from our previous meeting?
Um, let's see.
Is that part of the consent agenda that we're approving?
Let's, let me look at, see that.
Okay.
Give me a second.
Madam Chair, we're not at the consent agenda yet.
Okay, we're not at the consent, okay, we're still, okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, you're welcome. Okay, um, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote electronically. Okay, motion passes, six yes, one no. Okay, moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
I make a motion to approve the consent agendas provided by administration.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mackey. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott.
I would like for us to go back from the previous meeting and add the information. I noticed that before, we normally, on our minutes, we have listed under each person's name, comments that they normally make. But on the last meeting, it did not share that. So I would like the record to state to go back to our previous meeting and add that I made a motion for the chair to go back and take courses or resign from the board. And the motion was seconded by Mrs. Agostini. If we can just have the record to reflect that I did make that motion and it was seconded.
Okay, Doc, okay, Dr. Scott, you can have that. But I think that, um, thank you for putting that out there because I think we've already had counsel on the fact that that was an illegal motion. And so, but we can still add it to, we can still add it to the agenda.
Right, I think counsel indicated that it was not on the agenda. In order to have it on the agenda, we should not have made a motion. But that's okay. It doesn't have to be on the agenda. I just wanted for the record to reflect that.
Okay, no problem. No problem, Dr. Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other further discussion? Seeing none.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I think technically by Robert's rules, and perhaps Mr. Manning can help me out with this, but I think that we would need to amend the minutes then to reflect what Dr. Scott said.
That is correct. It's, um, we do need to amend. It is helpful when we get these requests, certainly not necessary, but helpful, to get the requests ahead of time so that we can have our board secretary and district administration address these issues more fully in the meeting. But yes, we do need to take a vote on, uh, an amendment to the presented minutes, um, as, as stated.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that clarity, everybody. So we will take a, uh, so is someone making a motion? Dr. Scott, can you repeat your motion, please?
Yes, I'd like to move that we add my comment from the previous meeting to the minutes, reflecting that I asked that the board chair take ethic courses, Robert Rules of Order, or resign as the board chair.
Okay.
And it was also seconded by Lindsay Agostini. I'd like for the record to reflect that. Um, I didn't ask for the second yet, but it'll reflect that in the minutes for the first round. Co, is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, just for clarity, I think what Dr. Scott was asking for was to have both her, um, the fact that she made the motion and the second from Ms. Agostini that night included in the minutes, which actually per Robert's rules, when somebody's called out of order, um, the statement that they made to be called out of order should typically be in the minute. So that's in line with, with that. So anyway, just to be sure we're all clear on the actual motion.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, any further discussion? If not, we will take the vote.
We need to second the motion.
I'm sorry, second.
I will second the motion.
I thought you had previously seconded. I'm sorry, got confused with Dr. Scott's second. Thank you. Second motion is seconded by Ms. Agostini. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Manning.
Um, I, I do appreciate the fact that it should be in the minutes. I think we're taking the right action here for that to be reflected. But I, I did want to provide clarity that we did receive, um, we were asked by Dr. Scott to provide a legal opinion and legal counsel did weigh in on the fact that that particular motion, because there was no agenda item, had it gone through, would have violated FOIA, um, state law. And so by calling it out of order, it was the right step in order to make sure that we're compliant with FOIA and state law because there was no agenda item, no 24-hour notice for that particular action.
Thank you, Mr. Manning, for doing that clarity so that we do know that that was, I was incorrect with the performance of Robert Rules of Order on that particular section. Okay, at this time, we will call for the vote. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Ms. Ag, say it again? I hit the wrong thing. Um, you, I'm, since it's about me, I'm going to abstain. Yes. Okay, motion passes, one, two, three, four, five, two, with two abstentions. Motion passes. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, may I please have a motion now to pass the consent agenda?
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I, just for clarity, the, the motion that's written up there that we all approved was to add the comments and approve the consent agenda as it's written on the screen.
So, okay, so we can, we can combine?
So I, I think the intent was to change the consent agenda, uh, or to change the minutes. But what was written down and what we all voted on actually included both approval of the consent agenda and the minutes.
Okay.
I, if, if I had a recommendation, I would state that unless the board really wants to go back and change it, that we take that as the approval of the consent agenda with the change in minutes.
Okay.
Unless there's another opinion on the matter.
Is there another standing opinion? Okay, seeing none, we'll take, we'll accept it as approval of the consent agenda. Moving on. Thank you.
Okay, we are now to the part of public participation. Before we get to that, I would like to just read something briefly about our public participation. The chairman of the board will introduce speakers who have previously submitted a request to the board at the appropriate time during the meeting and invite them to make comments on the agenda topics. Speakers may offer objective comments on school operations and programs that concern them. The board will not permit in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual schools, personnels, or any other person connected with the school system. Having said that, we just, we want to make sure that we all understand that, as a school board, we're happy to have anybody make the comments that they would like to make. But we are going to follow what is part of our policy, where we are not going to disparage any one person, individual school, or, or anything like that. At the, if we do do that, then I will, unfortunately, because I am the chair, use the gavel because that's not what we're here for. But your voices are certainly welcome to be heard. Your opinions are welcome to be heard. We do not always have to agree, and I am fine with that. But we do need to be respectful of one another. And saying that, and then that way, when we get a little past things, we can open things back and have more people participate. We're not here to try to shut anyone down. We want you to all have a voice. But we all have to understand that there's varying opinions. So let's please, and I'm asking please, let's please all just be respectful to each other. Having said that, we will start public participation. Okay, our first person is, okay, Monica, I'm gonna miss you, but Monica Glowinski? Did I say that correctly?
You did.
Yay, okay.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, okay. Got you. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so, Ms. Holmes, Dr. Holmes, it's Glowinski with a G, just for the record.
Okay.
I'm gonna put that there, so. So last time when I was here, I said I was going to be back and I didn't realize I was going to be back this quickly. So, uh, it's happy to see, I'm happy to see everyone again. So I appreciated the comments from the last meeting from one of the members who talked about co-op, cooperation and collaboration. And I, I think that's why we're all here. We're all here for the students. I don't think there's anybody in this room that does not want cooperation or collaboration. I think it's just, we look at things in, in different ways and we might have different viewpoints. And I was really encouraged by those remarks because I thought we're all moving in the same direction. And then on Friday, I believe it was, we saw the new policy come down regarding attendance at meetings. And that's something that really alarmed me. I don't believe, and this is my opinion, I don't believe that these procedures were created with safety in mind. They were created to stifle and silence the voices of parents and members of this community. Now, all one needs to do in order to come and speak at this meeting is to leave work early, get here an hour and a half before a meeting starts, and if you're one of the lucky 20 to get in the building, then you could be one of the lucky 10 to sign up and speak. If that is not disrupting and stifling public participation, I don't know what is. Rather than limit the number of community, community attendees who come in, why don't we limit the number of staff who are here? There's plenty of room if we limit the number of staff. Or why don't we hold the, this forum in another built, um, room in this building? There are plenty of spaces that we can move to that would invite more members of the public to participate and not less. Um, I noted on the website that there is a gala coming up on November 18th, and I think I heard remarks yesterday that this is not sponsored by the school, this is a nonprofit, and that's understandable. But I would hope that they are adhering to the same mask mandates that we are here at the building, that someone is checking them as they come in the door to make sure they have masks, masks on, and that they also have masks on when they're not actively eating and drinking. Because we want to make sure that we're in a, um, conforming to the mask policy that this district has set in place. We don't want to be in violation of that, correct? And then these mask mandates were supposed to be about our safety. But it's unfortunate that we, we, we don't see this practiced outside of this building. And, um, I don't want to go into, um, things that I've seen on social media, but I, I think that you have to be cognizant of the fact that people are watching. I think Dr. Holmes had mentioned yet last time that people are watching. And you're right, people are watching. The children are watching, the parents of the children are watching, the grandparents are watching, and the future parents are watching. So I, I thank you for your time and I'm looking forward to a lively discussion for the rest of the evening. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. We will now please have Larry Smalls.
Good evening, everybody. How are y'all?
Good evening.
You know what, ma'am, you don't have to go through all that. I mean, it's, it's not fun.
I like to be consistent.
Nope, that's fine.
The one thing I can't wipe is that, it's porous.
Oh, I'm not worried.
So, and you're, but you're welcome.
The last time we had a discussion, it was referenced that we could not call names, neither can we use the, uh, their titles. So tonight, I'm going to refer you as to the king and the queen and the subjects. I continue to hear a common theme being declared when there is a heated disagreement amongst yourselves, or when you're trying to control the public narrative when addressing Richland County citizens. Your care and concern for the children or the kids is what I constantly hear. I want to ask all of you a question. Do you really care about my kids? Let's put that claim to the test. Why won't you address and alleviate my concerns? Why do you see me, a father, as an enemy? Why do you see me as a threat, hence all of these invited guests? My point is, you can't possibly care and have concern for my kids if you don't care and have concern for me as the parent. My kids are a byproduct of me and my wife, the parents. So it's illogical to care for my kids but despise us as the parents. King, you said you are responsible for over 28,000 kids in this district, yet you don't know their names. You don't know their interests. You don't know their goals, let alone their purpose. So where is the responsibility in that? And since I'm despised as a citizen, Richland County, and you rule the Board of Trustees instead of the Board of Trustees controlling you, where is the accountability? Let me answer that question for you. There is none. Your concern is for your personal, political, self-interest at the expense of our children. Instead of focusing on providing our children a quality education which provides them the opportunity of life, liberty, and a pursuit of happiness, you'd rather indoctrinate them, which guarantees death, bondage, and a tragedy of hopelessness and despair. I believe the reason why you have such a devotion and concern for our children is not because you love them, is because you can control and manipulate them. They will not give you feedback or resist, but blindly, though unwillingly, do what you say. But it is not my child you need to appeal to. It's me. Does my children pay taxes? Does my children pay your salaries? Did my children place you in office? So your care and concern is not misplaced, your care and concern is misplaced. Your care and concern should be for me, the citizen of Richland County. My goal tonight is not to entertain a crowd or pursue politics. My concern as a father will always be my children. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have Gus Philpott. After our lovely Libby does her thing.
When I have Ms. Mackey's attention, I'll start, even though my time is running. What I'm going to say tonight is directly the board's business. The behavior and the actions demonstrated by the board during the past two months have become the talk of the town, and not in a good way. Comments on Facebook, nextdoor.com, on blogs and in the media have been very unfavorable about recent board meetings. The way in which board meetings have been conducted cannot continue. It is unhealthy for the children, the students, the community, the staff, the administration, and for the board itself. In the Native American world, a talking stick is used to keep order. This is what one looks like. This is how it's used. You can easily tell it is not used to beat someone over the head or bang on a desk for attention. According to Wikipedia, it is, quote, "an instrument of Aboriginal democracy used by many tribes, especially those of indigenous peoples of the northwest coast in North America." Really sorry not to have Ms. Mackey's attention tonight. The talking stick may be passed around a group as multiple people speak in turn, or used by leaders as a symbol of their authority and right to speak in public. Talking sticks are a contemporary northwest coast art form of great symbolic importance. When the talking stick is used, the person holding it has the floor. He is the only person who speaks. All others listen attentively and with respect. There are no side conversations or sly glances. When the speaker has finished, he passes the talking stick to the next person, and then all again, listen attentively without interruption. I respect this stick. It has good energy. For that reason, I do not offer it to the board. Instead, I suggest that you make your own talking sticks. At meetings, use one of them and use it well.
Thank you. We will now have Gary Jen.
Good afternoon, board. We really appreciate having y'all here today and we appreciate your comments tonight. Um, my, my goal tonight is, is to talk about your proposed attendance lines. your comments tonight. My goal tonight is to talk about your proposed attendance lines. Your proposed attendance lines deserve to be looked at because you have, your proposed attendance lines are basically going to be invalid probably by the end of next year, before school gets out. You have the Falls, which is on Hardscrabble Road, that has, right now, it has 100 occupied houses. Then there's going to be 317 more built and finished within the next year, year and a half. Then you have the Alden Pond neighborhood, which is on the corner of Hardscrabble and Rhymer Pond, that you're basically putting all these students. Well, if you got, I don't know anything about it, but if you look, if you think about it, you've got, if you've got 200 houses by the end of this fall next year, you're going to have 200 students. So you're going to overload Lake Carolina and the schools that you're moving these people to when you move the guidance lines. So y'all need to look into that, because that's only negating to build another school, or whatever you got to do to move it next year. And you're moving these kids around, they don't even know who their friends and neighbors are if you take them from one school and put them in the other. So that's not fair to them. That's not fair to our children. So, that being said, I was really disappointed in persons that make my child wear a mask in school every day. Every day, there's only, there's only 32,000 people, 32,000 children and parent, I mean, 32,000 students and teachers in School District Two. On, two weeks ago, there was a football game in Williamsburg Stadium that had 82,000 maskless people. There were 385,000 people that attended the state fair. They didn't have masks on either. You take, you put your mask on, you go into the stadium, and hey, guess what? You take it off when you get through the door, because you can't police it. A good one of us, good people of others, was banned from the school property because he didn't want to wear a mask. But y'all, y'all went to the football game the weekend later, and hey, every one of you weren't wearing a mask. You went to meet with the general. No one of you, not one of you were wearing a mask in that room with him.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Next, we will have Julia Weaver.
You can take your mask off. That's just the part I can't wipe down. Think you'll touch it? My name is actually Julie Weaver. You said Julia.
I apologize, Julie.
Happens all the time. Anyways, I'm here this evening to follow up as a parent, more like Larry Smalls addressed you already. But a little bit about me is that I grew up and have lived in Richland Two my entire life. I've had one child already graduate from Blithwood High School three years ago, and he is having tremendous success at Clemson University. Says something about your teachers he had 12 years with. I had two high school children in the district on track to follow their brother's footsteps. However, this all changed when the district went virtual and grossly failed at the implementation of virtual learning. I want to be clear. I do not blame these teachers, but I hold the administration responsible for the failure of virtual implementation. Special needs children went unsupported by Richland Two for their IEPs, which is a violation of so many laws and policy that it is of no wonder why we are having our two people with ethics violations. Moving forward, I have watched all the board meetings and all things COVID-related. I consider myself very knowledgeable on these items. When I realized that our two became more concerned about violating our First Amendment rights so as to not let parents decide what is best for our very own children, not your children, but my children, and refused to offer face-to-face instruction, I withdrew my two remaining children from the district. This was a gut and heart-wrenching decision. We prayed for days and weeks about this, and it hurt like hard. It was hard. You altered their lives in a very unnecessary way. You took them away from their lifelong friends, their sports teams, their school community where they were active participants in and had come to love. It was always my youngest son, who is a current sophomore, to come back to Richland Two this school year. However, after watching the gross disrespect to the First Amendment and the vile and hypocritical behavior of the board, I was not able to bring my son back to Richland Two to become a pawn in your antics this year. He remains in private school, and he is desperately missing his community that he has grown up in. You have robbed him of this. I would like to point out that this is your loss. It is your loss because he has perfect test scores, and your teachers, your teachers, your fantastic teachers have helped him get those. Not, and give him some credit too because he's smart. But that was the work of your teachers from him being in a special needs class when he was in pre-K, and then on the first day of school, reading a book to his kindergarten class. You openly said you wanted and welcomed parent participation involvement. Well, now you have it, but what did you do with it? You suppressed it by limiting 20 members hiding behind COVID. We won't stand for it any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to Melissa McFadden.
Hello. My name is Melissa McFadden. I have six kids in this district. I chose not to send my four-year-old here because of the mask mandates. And I emailed you guys an email. I've given you a copy of all that, of that email, and that I and another parent wrote. And also, I sent you a copy of the Charleston School District exemption form. The Charleston County School District exemption form has four exemption options. One for health conditions, one for developmental conditions, one due to religious reasons, and one for any other reason. If this district plans to continue this mandate, at the very least, an exemption needs to be offered. Parents deserve a say in whether or not our kids should have to wear a piece of cloth on their face. And to be clear, a face shield is not an acceptable exemption, and it is not even recommended by the CDC for use in schools. We are asking for an exemption similar to the Charleston one to be implemented here in District Two. And in closing, I just want to say that just because you can does not mean you should trample on our civil rights and our constitutional liberties. Mandates aren't laws. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now have Jeff Philippi.
Last time I was here, I brought factual evidence of white kids don't need to wear masks. However, that fell on deaf ears. And now I fully understand why parents get upset at these meetings. I've heard from a lot of parents about calls and emails going in return throughout the district. At you as a board are elected leaders to have and have the power to control the temperature of these meetings. All it would take is a little empathy. I know this because I've been in numerous leadership roles and have chaired hundreds of meetings. However, when people speak here, they get scoffed at and sneered at, and you can see the boards disgust that the peasants dare speak ill of the high court. This is, this led me to look at moving better schools, and what I found disturbed me even more. Richland Two is about the 15th-ranked school districts in South Carolina. It only has a 52% reading proficiency and a 50% math proficiency. When looking at moving to Iowa there, the school was the 60th-ranked district in the state, but it has 66% reading proficiency and 60% math proficiency. Only one school district in South Carolina beats that, 60th-ranked district in Iowa, and it's not Richland Two. However, Richland Two has the nerve to claim it's the premier district. This should embarrass you, but I know it doesn't, because you're more interested in giving some people in charge big raises and continuing to fail our children. You're more concerned about inclusion and diversity than educating our children. All I hear from the board is that you're here for the children, and you have been involved in education for this many years. Maybe that's the problem, the status quo. I'd like to know if there's a plan to actually teach our kids to read and do math. I know your time goes into making tyrannical mandates and speaking to the media. I know this because after the last meeting, someone blamed the parents for the tension in the meeting, saying, quote, "It's an easy stomping ground to try and push their agendas." That couldn't be more from the truth. It's parents advocating for their children. Someone else in the same article said, quote, "Masks and other small items," I don't want to say that masks are a small item. You know, in the scope of bigger things of the district, that is a small thing that we deal with. If that's a small item, then make them strongly recommended rather than required. I say this because, as somebody else said, the upcoming order of the Flame Gala, masks are highly encouraged. It's funny when the ruling elite want to get together, they can decide if they want to wear masks, but parents can't have the freedom to make the same decision for their kids when they sit at school today, or even for this meeting. We say in the beginning of this that it's liberty and justice for all, but we really don't use that here.
Okay, thank you. We will next have Matthew Wilder. Libby, I'm rushing you too fast. I'm sorry.
No, no, but I'm having trouble getting them out of this container.
Mr. Wilder, give Libby just a few minutes, please.
I should, should be more experienced at doing that, but.
You're good, Libby. We appreciate you.
All right. Good evening. I want to share a quick story that might provide an emotional response for some of the board members, and I do appreciate the board chair's comments right before this about unity. About nine years ago, I was a young lieutenant onboard a submarine, and we're new parents, and as fate would have it, because that's Matthew Wilder's luck, my son was going to have a surgery about two days after we're going to get underway before deployment. So I went to my leadership, and I asked the question, we're about to get underway for two weeks. Can I stay back for this, be there for my family, and I'll make sure I'm on the deployment. I'm ready to go. My chain of command agreed and went to my captain. He did not share that same compassion. Some might say he ruled with a gavel and that he was a dictator on the submarine. He quoted the Constitution to me and told me that my country needed me specifically, so you're all welcome for that. That was a joke. I disagreed, but I went on with a yes, sir, and I went home. All right, so I had to go tell my wife. If you've met her, she's a lovely lady. She can get a little bit emotional, and she was a new mom, so I had to tell her that, that I wasn't going to be able to be there for that surgery for our young child. In a level of grace and strength that I have never seen displayed by anyone, she fought back tears and said, yeah, that's what I signed up for. And there are a bunch of stories like that. You can watch YouTube and see parents do that. I tell you this story because you're getting a lot of feedback up here that's difficult. I don't envy the position that you're in, given the state that we're in, but it is what you signed up for. You all filled out the forms with the county to run for public office and to receive the criticism. I expect, and I think the constituents expect, that you would receive it with grace and listen, all right? Open the doors, open your ears, don't shut them and exclude folks from participating in this. I don't want to stand up here and pontificate and give you my beliefs on governance and what your job should be or to lambaste anyone, because I do know that your task is an arduous one. It's just some of the hypocrisy that's already been highlighted when we're talking about a gala being held in this very building. People have already brought up the football games. I don't know if any historical or outside information was used in setting the salary or the severance package, but did you know that there are other states that have limited severance packages for their superintendents to 12 months to prevent hamstringing future boards? Those are other laws. It's policy diffusion. I think there's a budding MPA person on the board. That's the kind of expectation that your constituents have when you're setting these new policies or putting in new contracts. Lastly, I just want to say, listen, learn, listen, lead, and your mission says that you partner with the community, and that's what we expect. That's all anyone here is asking for, is to partner with the community. Everyone's been praying for you. I know it seems like you get, you get a lot of grief up here, but folks have been walking this building all week and praying for you guys and for the district, so it's not all bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Joe Trapp.
I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. I have been reading on the district website in an effort to understand the roles of board members and district employees. On the district's services page, we find the Diversity and Multicultural Inclusion Department. On the department webpage, we find many links. Here are a few. Black History Month, Native American History or Heritage Month, Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Women's History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, LGBTQ+ Awareness. If you visit these pages, the word "celebrate" is often used. There's also an open letter from one of the staff. Here are a few excerpts. Quote, "To our students, our parents, our staff, and our community, we acknowledge that black lives matter. We acknowledge that hundreds of years of abduction, enslavement, segregation, discrimination, stereotyping, and mistreatment simply based on the dark color of a person's skin have created generational trauma," end of quote. Who caused this trauma? I suspect it was white men. She continues, "At the same time, we must also acknowledge that it is inherently unfair to judge everyone with a broad brush and declare that all white people are bad or are racist," end of quote. So far, this is the only reference to white people I have found. When we elevate a group of people based on their race, it is racism. When we vilify a group of people based on race, it is racism. When we give recognition to a group or individual based on race, it is racism. District policies and programs should not promote division, yet the Diversity and Multicultural Inclusion Program is actually a program of exclusion. This department includes everyone except white males. A staff member writes, "It is unfair to say all white people are racist." This is just the tip of the iceberg. Their concept that this department is needed implies that students of color are excluded from district services and that white students receive more than their share of services. I would ask the board to dissolve this department and spend that money helping students reach their individual potentials and stop perpetuating the concept that black students are helpless victims and that black students can't compete with white students. I believe these students in our school district have an incredible amount of potential, and I do not think it's appropriate to fill their heads with concepts such as victimhood and failure based on their race. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker will be Stephen Gilchrist. Mr. Gilchrist, please give Libby a minute.
Thank you, Ms. Libby. Madam Chair and the board, let me thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. Wanted to, as all of you know, I'm a parent in the district. I've been a longtime parent in the district. I have a spouse that works in the district. She's been a longtime staff member here. But I come to you tonight expressing several concerns that I witnessed on your October 12th meeting. In the essence of full disclosure, I am a United States Civil Rights Commissioner. And on October the 12th, I was most concerned with the fact that parents had the opportunity to come before you to express concerns about what they felt like they were concerned about, all but to be silenced by this board. That concerned me as a parent, as a spouse, as the United States Civil Rights Commissioner, because I felt like folk that came here to express their concern to you were not given the opportunity to do so. On October the 15th, I signed onto a letter to Attorney General Merrick Garland, expressing my concern along with several other commissioners in this country about school boards attacking parents because of their right to parents because of their right to speak and to be heard. I was a little appalled that I had to sign onto that letter three days after I came to my neighboring district, my home district, to witness something that I thought I would never see, and that is to, the, 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 the ability of the board to deny folk the right, their First Amendment right. And so I, you know, I've heard some of the people that have come before you already to express their concern about, uh, y- you know, the limitations that we're experiencing this evening. Uh, a- and I just want to say to you that, as the public, you have a responsibility as elected officials of the public to be responsive to the people that elect you. And this is not a light task, and I got so much more, I would love to say I got 24 seconds, but I want to, I want to say one other thing that, before I get, take my seat. Every one of you are elected at large. We have no single-member districts in this, in this district. This is something that I would love for this board to consider with your legislative colleagues, with your congressional colleagues, and I'll be happy to support it as the United States Civil Rights Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist. Okay. Thank you. That is the end of our public participation.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott?
Yeah, just a question. I know we always have, um, two sessions on the agenda for public participation. Are we having a first and a second tonight, or just one?
No, we're finished for the night.
Oh, okay, so I'll talk...
That's usually generally there, Dr. Scott, in the event that the chair decides to split it, but I did not want to hold people here till late in the evening, so I allowed everyone to just speak at one time. Generally, I could have split it, but I, time is late, and I know you have things to do. And like I said, we're not trying to stifle anybody, so I wanted to give you all the time to just say what you needed to say. So that's why we did it that way.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, I'm not sure if this is the time, and correct me if, um, Miss speaking, but I would like to see us move back upstairs to give more parents and the community an opportunity to speak. Uh, and the reason why I say that, I received an email earlier today from a student...
Let's, let's do, Dr. Scott, can we do that? I don't, I'm not trying to stifle you, but can we do that at the end? Because I think that there may, yeah, I think there may be several people who feel that way, so let's just, let's table that to the end, okay?
Okay, no problem.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, moving on to 7.1 student appeals.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Manning.
Um, I make a motion that, uh, student number two, I'm going to do student number one separately and later. Student number two attends Lifewood Academy.
You're doing separately, correct?
Uh, I, number one will be separate the others, um, so I'm, I'm going to come back to number one.
You're going to come back to one?
I'm going to come back to one.
Okay.
Student number two attends Lifewood Academy. Students number three and four uphold district recommendation for expulsion.
Okay, do we have a second? Second? Seconded by Ms. Agostini, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will take the vote electronically.
Madam Chair, can I just see the motion to make sure it's correct? Thank you.
I wasn't rushing you, Mr. Manning.
No, you're fine.
Just give me a second.
It's, uh, our board secretary has the tough role of doing these things on the, on the fly. Thank you very much, that's correct.
You said the motion is correct?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will now take the vote electronically. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To go back to student number one, I want to, um, uphold the appeal of the student. However, the student will not be allowed to ride the bus for the remainder of the year.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey, any discussion? Seeing none, we will take the vote electronically.
The rest of, the bus is right, uphold, right, the, uphold the student's appeal, but no bus access for the rest of the year. Correct, I'm upholding the, uh, parents' appeal to the board. So essentially, the student will go back to their home school but have no bus access for the rest of the year.
Is the motion correct, Mr. Manning?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, we will take the vote electronically, please.
I didn't, I don't have a pop-up. Okay, it's back on now. I'm sorry? It's about, it popped up, yeah, I got it now.
Um, okay, um, Madam Chair, can we, can we revert to a hand vote to just be clear? If you would, please.
Is it that easier for you right now? It's easier for...
Is it easier for us to do the hand vote for you right now? Okay, all right, all in favor of Mr. Manning's motion, please raise your hand. Okay, that's two, two. Raise your hand again if you're in favor of Mr. Manning's motion. Okay. Okay, motion fails. No, Madam, I'm sure you have to ask all those opposed. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I was in my own struggle with that particular situation. I'm sorry. Are those opposed? Okay, three or five. Motion fails five to two. Okay, do I have another motion?
Hold, Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you voted in favor.
Ms. Agostini, like every other member, I have the right to change my mind. I changed my mind. I did, I mean, what's the problem?
Oh, I can under, well, no, I didn't hear you state then that you changed your mind and were voting.
I didn't state it, we did a hand vote.
Oh, you can't vote twice, you, you need to clarify.
I, I did say that, I said, I was in, well, my vote is with what I voted, thank you. Okay, moving on. Okay, is there another motion?
Madam Chair.
Ms., Dr. Scott?
I'd like to make a motion for student number one, that that student attends Lifewood Academy for the remainder of the school year.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Agostini, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will take the vote after she puts it up there. Are we going to do it electronically this time, or are we still hand voting? Jill? Okay, we'll do it electronically.
Do you get a pop-up? Not on mine.
Yeah, Jill, I refreshed mine, and it popped back up, but it had showed the original vote, so that's why I hit refresh for it to pop up, so I don't know if we're having system issues.
Okay. All right, let's just go ahead and do a hand vote on that. Okay, all in, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion passes six to one. Thank you. Um, moving on to 7.2 breach of contract, Mr. Manning.
Madam Chair, uh, I move that we deny the district's recommendation to move the breach of contract forward to the State Department.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Agostini, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will take the vote. Jill, do you still need us to do hand vote? Okay, we're going, we're going to try it and see. Technology is good when it works.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, it came up.
Oh, there it is.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. Moving on to eight, let me see, we're on... Did a breach contract. Okay, 8.1, approval of proposed attendance lines, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, to our public in attendance and those who are viewing us via live stream. Uh, we are at the section of unfinished business action requested where we're asking for the approval of the proposed attendance lines. We're asking for a motion to approve the attendance zone boundaries adjusted effective for the year 2022, 2023 academic school year.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Agostini?
I move to approve the recommended attendance zone boundary adjustments effective for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Manning, any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If we could just go through, I know things have changed a little bit from the initial, um, presentation, um, could we just cover the schools that will be open to choice that are included in this, um, rezoning?
Um, that, that, okay, hang on, Ms. Agostini, give me one second. Ms. Mackey, you had a question?
You can finish, Ms. Agostini.
Okay. Um, Ms. Agostini, I don't think that that's a problem, that you can, that that should be a problem. It is, are you, are you prepared to do that tonight? He needs to, yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Um, Ms. Mackey?
Is Mr. Simon going to get a chance to present the presentation that you prepared for us? Not sure if he's got a chance to address that, but I'm hoping you'll be able to present the presentation that you have for us.
So my plan is not to, um, go through the presentation.
Okay.
I did want to take a moment to just highlight some of our outreach efforts.
Thank you.
If you don't mind.
Thank you.
That would be great.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey.
So we first introduced the attendance line review at the August 24th board meeting, and since then, um, we've had three in-person meetings in September, uh, one at Bethel Hanbury, one at Langford, and one at Lake Carolina Lower Campus. We even held a virtual meeting on September 27th for parents living in the Falls subdivision specific to their issue. Uh, we did have low attendance at the meetings, but we wanted to let all of you know that in the invite to all of our parents, parents, we included, uh, a recording of the presentation that we made, um, at the board. We included the PowerPoint file. Um, also, we included the same information, uh, in our district newsletter. Even after our meetings, we use exit tickets where it provided parents an opportunity to provide feedback after the meeting, after hearing the information. Um, we, we got two responses, um, and I personally received calls from four parents who had questions, um, and we were able to answer all of the questions. Um, but all of the parents started a conversation with, and I'm paraphrasing here, "I understand why you guys are doing what you're doing." Uh, so, uh, at this point, we're just asking the board to support, uh, the recommended changes and not answer any questions.
Board members, do you have any questions?
Comments?
Okay, um, I think I saw Ms. Mackey first.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to tell, I, I know as a parent, having been on the receiving end of, of, uh, having gone through the redrawing of attendance lines when my children are in school here, I appreciate the outreach efforts, uh, that was, um, that, that, that the, uh, district underwent and, and providing opportunities and community sessions, I mean, ad nauseam for parents and community members. I was able to, um, attend one or two, but I appreciate the outreach effort and, um, there's lots of opportunities to provide feedback, to ask questions. There is no perfect scenario, I'm a living witness to that, but I appreciate what I, what appears to be the best scenario. Thank you.
Yeah, and our communications team did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
No question.
Okay. I heard, um, are you addressing, addressing me, Ms. Agostini?
Yes, when you said, yeah, I still have my unanswered question from before.
Okay, the reason I'm saying that is, is because according to Robert's Rules of Order, they want us to follow the guidelines of saying, asking the questions here first, and then I, we can address it with the staff, because we don't want, there, but there were some issues with that, so we're going to adhere to that policy. So if you have a question, address me first, please, and then I will address it to the staff. Thank you. So do you, so please address it to me. Yeah, so you just restate your question. Go ahead.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Agostini?
I would like to know, um, there's been some change in, uh, what was initially presented in terms of what elementary schools that are considered, or that are in this plan for rezoning, where there'll be choice. Could we please just go through what of these schools will be open to choice and which ones will not, and why? Thank you.
Are you prepared to answer that question tonight?
Yes.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Okay. All right, so, um, and it's not a change, this is information we consider after, um, we get through our presentations and we look at, um, how many parents are making this sort of request, and then we continue to look at new residential development in the area. Since then, we've made some determinations, and the schools that we're going to be recommending to be open and closed during the first choice period is going to be, uh, Bethel Hanbury will be open, but it's going to be open with a cap. This is not a new practice, this is something that we do three or four times, three times a year at all of our choice periods. Lake Carolina Elementary Lower will be open. Lake Carolina Elementary, uh, Upper will be open. Langford Elementary, uh, will be closed to choice. Uh, you may ask, why will they be closed for choice, and they will have some sort of capacity at that school? Um, there's a lot of construction, uh, that's happening in the Langford Elementary, uh, attendance zone at this point, and so in order to be safe, uh, we want to keep, uh, that attendance zone closed for the choice period. And Round Top Elementary, uh, will be closed. As I demonstrated in my presentation, there's no capacity there, uh, and we're also allowing some of our parents in the Falls subdivision to, um, exercise the grandfathering clause, which is going to, um, keep some of those students there.
Thank you, I think I believe I saw Mr. Manning next.
Um, Madam Chair, just before I go, I wanted to make sure Ms. Agostini had her question fully answered before I...
No, I was going to say, thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Manning.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
I, I wanted to say, and we heard some comments earlier, th- this is one of the toughest decisions, um, that I make as a board member, that we make as board members to rezone. It is very disruptive to families. Um, they buy a home with the intent that their child will go to the schools that they're zoned for, and we come back afterwards and we change that, and that is very disruptive. It's, it's difficult, however, we're also tasked with utilizing, um, the resources that we have, the spaces that we have within schools, so that we can provide the best educational opportunities with the programs that are in each school, um, utilize the schools that we have without unnecessary building, uh, which is expensive to build and add on to schools, and so it is a necessary part of the job. Um, but, but it is difficult. I will say that, for the most part, I feel like the district has a good track record with understanding, um, we're, we're always behind the curve, right? I mean, we, we only know what we know, uh, what's been provided to Richland County. Um, we don't know what... We don't know what intent or plans are builders outside of that. But we, we do have a relatively good track record within this district of, of making these decisions. Not a hundred percent, but definitely high up there. So thank y'all for your work. I know there's a lot of science and math that goes into it, and we do have a lot of experience with it. So it's, again, very tough. It, it's definitely one of the, the top five toughest issues that I make, decisions I have to make as a board member. Thank you.
Yeah, and we as a district, we just wanna say thank you to all the parents that did attend the meetings and did call and email. We actually encourage that communication, so we appreciate that.
Okay, any other discussion? Ms., okay, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I, I wanted to take an opportunity to publicly thank our, our team in both communications, as well as in our planning department for working so diligently to come up with the re, or proposal for the adjustments to the attendance lines for these, for these schools, particularly in, all located in one particular community where we see a lot of growth in the Blackwood area. We know this work is difficult and this work can be tedious, but also you taught and thought about the care in that process. I also wanna thank, again, the parents for coming out. Hosting three information sessions was critical. And then getting an opportunity to meet with parents and address their concerns face to face, which does go to show that we are making a concerted effort to have a communication with our parents and hear their voice. I would ask a question, based off of any information that we see, were there any, I think Ms. Agostini was asking the question, were there any adjustments made as a result of having conversations with parents?
Uh, no, no, no adjustments were made.
Were there any adjustments that could have been made that would not put us in a situation where we would be at capacity or put us in the back in the situation, as we stated earlier, that we'll have to address the growth issue at some point down the line?
No, no, no adjustments.
It was in our attempt for us not to kick the can down the road, but to address this issue now, because we know that the growth is continuing to, to show in the Richland School District Two community, which is a positive thing. It's something that we all have to continue to work on to improve, because people want to have their students educated in our school district. And that is evident by the, the continued development in our community, because we do have excellent leaders and excellent schools. And I appreciate that, and I appreciate the efforts that you've made. I know we also took an opportunity to tour the schools with those parents who wanted to tour those schools. Those parents who have questions, cause also have their questions answered at their school's SIC meetings, which they have access to their SIC, SIC chairs and their principals to show that we are working in collaboration and partnership with that. And I do wanna take the opportunity to thank the board as well, because many of our board members did show to those meetings and were also available and accessible to the community to answer any questions or concerns, and walked and saw the maps and asked their questions as well in front of the public. And so I'm thankful that our board members attended those, several of those meetings, whether at Bethel Handberry, Catawba Trails, or as well as Lake Carolina. So again, thank you to our board members for doing that, and thank you to our community for your support and making, helping us make a very tough decision. Thank you, Mr. Simon. Langford, I said, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Langford, I did say Langford Elementary, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Davis. I believe, did we already, we already put the motion on the floor? Has it, we've already seconded it, have we not? Okay, we are now ready for the vote. Okay, we're gonna vote electronically. I believe we have it up there. Who made the motion? That was Ms. Agostini.
Madam Chair, Ms. Agostini made the motion, and I seconded it.
Is it correct, Ms. Agostini?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we will take the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, at this time, we will move on to nine point one, the superintendent's highlights, Dr. Davis.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair members of the board, to our public that is here in attendance, as well as to the hundreds of individuals that are viewing our board meetings online. I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you for joining us again this afternoon and this evening. I wanna share the superintendent's highlights. I've cut them down just a little bit because of the length of time, but I wanted to start this, start out by saying that since the start of this school year, I have encouraged the Richland Two family to focus or refocus on our core values of, of doing things the premier way, which means that we want to focus on providing premier learning experiences for our students. We want to demonstrate at all times premier character. We want to invest and continue to invest in our communities, and most importantly, we wanna work to create conditions where joy can reside. I've shared with this multiple times that we're not responsible for individuals' joy, but we can have a collaborative effort in creating conditions where joy can reside. So to encourage all of us in doing these things the right way, the Richland Two way, the premier way, my highlights tonight will focus on recognizing recent accomplishments that demonstrate the commitment to our core values of learning, character, community, and joy, because I think we need a refocus on the positive things that are actually taking place in our school district each and every day, and begin to move away and not focus on some of the peripheral things. Although those things are important, they're not centered around our students. So let's talk about those things tonight. I begin with our cornerstone of all that we do in Richland Two, which is learning. So Sandlapper Elementary School, if you did not know, is celebrating its success in a classroom with a virtual showcase of computer science and robotics. So next Friday, October the 29th, at 8:45 a.m., Sandlapper will begin hosting a virtual epic build celebration to share student projects with, with robotics. The event will be streamed live from classrooms across the school. Students will share their work with different robotic kits, including three different versions of Lego robots. Parents and community members will get to see and hear from students and teachers about the way robotics has been integrated into our classrooms. Sandlapper is a computer science immersion school that partners with Code to the Future to integrate computer skills, computer science skills throughout the school experience. This year, you will, you will hear our district and school administrators talk about maximizing instructional time to recover the lost instructional time from the previous two school year, previous two years. And this is really, really important for us, because I do remember a time where the biggest concern we had as a community, as a school, was ensuring that our students were receiving direct face-to-face instruction to make up for the loss of instructional time. So a key factor in making this happening, happens, is to keep our students in school. We've talked about the universal indoor masking in terms of safety for students and employees, and it has been a critical, it has helped in reducing the number of students who have had to quarantine as a result of being in close contact. The medical experts at DHEC continually study and monitor data in order to adjust quarantine procedures. And I'm speaking specifically about quarantine procedures, because sometimes that was out of the hands of students, whether or not they have to be quarantined. Their efforts coupled with, coupled with the district's mask requirements has helped to reduce the number of students in quarantine and thus maximizing the amount of face-to-face instruction that our students are receiving. A student who has quarantined for 10 days, a student who quarantines for 10 days could be out of school for a maximum of eight days. That's a total of 48 hours of school time per student, and they could happen more than one time. They could, they could be quarantined twice to no fault of that student. So they could just imagine that being 16, 16 days for that student as opposed to the 10, the 10 days. We've gone from around 18,000 hours of out-of-school downtime to roughly about 5,800 approximately hours of downs, of, of out-of-school downtime as a result of some of the changes that have been made to the quarantine requirements, as well as having a universal indoor, universal mask requirement for our, our students. Most of the students in this age group, as you may imagine, being elementary students and middle school students, are not able or eligible to be vaccinated. And so this effort has really helped to ensure that those students have been in school. I've done some, some, some real calculations and looking at some of the challenges that many of our students have had. And I was thought about some of our sixth graders, for example, who may finish their entire sixth grade year with no interruptions, but in their seventh grade year, we were out of school in March, and in their eighth grade year, they didn't come to school at all, or we have virtual or hybrid and face-to-face, and here it is, this year, they're now in ninth grade. So they essentially missed two years of middle school. Seventh grade or a year and a half of middle school, seventh grade and eighth grade, and now they're in ninth grade. And really, really having some challenges, some of them, as a result of making that, again, a transitional period in their lives from sixth grade and now ninth grade. And so this has really helped us in our efforts to try to reduce those challenges that those students are facing. Our students have had unique and cutting-edge opportunities also offered to them this year through a new partnership, which I'm super excited about. This partnership is with Create Opportunity Columbia. And if you haven't heard about Create Opportunity Columbia, let me tell you a little bit about it, and you'll understand why I'm excited about it. Richland Two, number one, is the first district in the state to partner with this organization, which has the goal of providing an alternative path to careers in computer science. Again, focusing on STEM and preparation for the future for our students. Students who, students from all five high schools are volunteered to participate in a small pilot program which assess their natural thinking patterns to determine if they are likely to be successful computer programmers. After passing a 90-minute screening test, students are interviewed by representatives from Create Opportunity. If this is any student, doesn't matter what subjects they take, whether they are your traditional students, your advanced placement students, your honors, any student in high school, and a senior can, can apply for this opportunity, because it's based on how they think, not necessarily the courses that they take. So this is about access to opportunities for these students. The state average passing rate is about 14 to 18 percent. But we are excited that, that as of today, the Richland Two pass rate is around 39 percent. Those who pass will be given an opportunity at the graduation to take a six-month course at Milton's Tech and then be placed in a two-year guided apprenticeship at one of these four companies right here locally in our, in our city. Nefron Pharmaceuticals, Colonial Life, Cyberwoven, or Diesel Laptops. And this is the most exciting part. During the two years, they will be paid a salary of $40,000 with full retirement and health benefits. And at the end of the two-year apprenticeship program, they will be placed as a mid-level computer programmer, making a market wage of $60,000 to $80,000 a year. I'll roll out to the, I'll roll out to all interested scenes in Richland Two, will begin this November. And I think that is just an exciting opportunity for the students right here in Richland School District Two, an opportunity two years after high school to be gainfully employed as a computer programmer, making between $60,000 and $80,000. So I'm so thankful for the opportunities that we have to partner with companies like Create Opportunity. For our core values of community, I want to focus on the new facilities for Bethel Handberry, which is really taking shape if you had an, had an opportunity to go out to the Blackwood area and see the beautiful facility that's being, being built to replace the old Bethel Handberry. All former students and employees are being invited back to Bethel Handberry to walk the halls and visit classrooms one last time. And so as many of you may know, a new school is being constructed on the site through the 20, the 2018 bond referendum. Bethel Handberry is hosting a series of Generation Nights beginning this October, October the 28th, from, starting at 6:30 for students and staff who attended or worked at the school during the 1920s to the 1960s to reminisce. So I, I need to get out and, and see if I can meet anybody who may have been around in that community in the 1920s and get their impression of what the new school is gonna look like, because I would imagine their school, the version of their school looks vastly different from what is being constructed today. So please check the district website for more dates through April 2022. This year, we'll also wrap up our October celebration with Boo at Two, which we've done in the past. So on October, on Friday, October the 29th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., Richland Two and the Richland Two Library are hosting Boo at Two, which will be a drive-through event. So bring the children out for lots of treats. And if it rains, unfortunately, because it's a drive-through event and it's gonna be at the end of the month, we will not be able to reschedule it, so it'll be canceled. So let's hope that it does not rain, and our students get an opportunity to participate at Boo at Two. And then I'll wrap up and conclude with two things, character and joy. So today, I presented at the, presented at Richland Two Employee with our district's Culture of Excellence Award for his demonstration of, of premier character. So this is Mr. Tim Stuhler. He's an outstanding physical education teacher who provides services to many of our special education students, and he's just more than just that. He's also serves in the Army and recently received orders for a four-week assignment. And while checking in on Mr. Stuhler while he was out, Craig Corner, who's his supervisor, learned that he was flying missions out of Afghanistan. So Mr. Stuhler helped over 122,000 people get safely out of the country during six missions that totaled 87 flying hours and 15,000 miles. And we just wanna take the opportunity to thank Mr. Stuhler and so many more individuals like himself for their service to our country and also to our school district. And I know we're gonna have an opportunity to do more on, in November as we celebrate our veterans. But this is just an outstanding award and a great recognition for a great, a great individual that just happens to also be employed right here in our district and providing premier character for our students. And so for just a few moments of joy, which I think is the most important of these four squares, next to the learning cornerstone, but one of the most important, and that's Mr. Lally, has been chosen as the 2022 South Carolina Association's for Physical Education and Sport Elementary Teacher of the Year. Mr. Lally is the PE teacher at Lake Carolina Elementary Upper Campus. He will be formally recognized next month at the South Carolina Alliance for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Conference in Myrtle Beach. That's a long title for a conference. And last but not least, I do wanna take an opportunity to congratulate Dr. Helen Grant on being named the Best Diversity and Inclusion Officer of the Year in the Columbia Business Monthly 2021 South Carolina Best in Business Awards. Dr. Grant will be listed in the December issues of Charleston, Columbia, and Greenville editions of this magazine. So congratulations to you, Dr. Grant. And thank you to our, our board for permitting me an opportunity to share the superintendent's highlights to those of you who are in attendance for listening, and those of you who are viewing, for listening to this, our spotlight this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Davis. We appreciate all those highlights, that was very informative for us, thank you so much. We'll now move on to nine point two, update capital improvements, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair members of the board, and to our public. We have Mr. Anderson, who will give us the status of the Richland Two Bond and Capital Improvement Projects for October 2021. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, and good evening, everyone. You all got in your packets, or the board agenda, the board docs with the more, more comprehensive overview and report, but I just wanna give you a few updates from our last meeting in September. So this past weekend, or during the Professional Development Day and the, and the half-day, we were able to finally get everyone into the new space at Blackwood High School. So that was great, the new fifth, the new fifth wing and the other additions. So slowly moving some more, more students in there, but officially started moving and getting to use those spaces, so we're happy about that. Conder and Joseph Kill's design keeps going very well. Actually, today, we're gonna start going to bid for Joseph Kill's in November. A little ahead of schedule, because we do have good documents already for Joseph Kill's. We have some issues with Conder, really about the site that we're working on, but we're, we're still scheduled for construction in Conder in March, and we may move up construction at Joseph Kill's into January. We did have a lot of interest and a lot of bid work, bids for the Rich Northeast High renovations. Actually, had a review of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment today with a contractor. We had lots of bids, and we are within and actually gonna be under budget. Once we get that rev, review signed, we'll start the work, will begin in December. So very happy how that budget came in. And then our performing, our Performing Arts Center, we will be reviewing those construction documents next week, and then going over the GMP to hopefully get that issued and start construction in January. Dr. Davis just talked about Bethel Handberry. Was great to have a few of you out there last couple weeks to get a tour of the facility. I know some of you had conflicts and couldn't be there, but we're happy to, to give you a, a, a tour again. We have started interior painting last week on some of the spaces that have the windows in. So we are really moving along great at Bethel Handberry, and can't wait to, to start moving that process along further. Right now, the completion will be in December, June 2022. E.L. Wright and C.F.K., another project that's moving along very well. This picture on your, the big picture is, was from the first of the month, and now there's both of those. And now those, both of those buildings are completely bricked in. We were, were able to move the scaffolding off of the traffic line. And so ma- making a lot of progress there. Interior work, working our way from left to right. So board members from the left to the right as we move from this hill. And then then this, this will continue going with the administration wing and the cafeteria. But again, July is the completion date for E.L. Wright. And as a reminder, we then will then tear down the other building and start working on C.F.K. C.F.K. will be done for 2023. Forest Lake, again, we've had some great weather knock on wood lately, so we're able to really pick up pace. These photos, again, were first of the month, and now they're a little outdated. The, you can see the big retaining wall in the large picture. And on the left side where that backhoe is, is now they've started pouring footings for the first floor. This is on a, on a slope. So the first floor is the main floor and it goes down to the second floor. So it's two stories on the back. Again, this is blockwork as opposed to steel, so we're making good progress there. This will be a July finish. Once E.L. Wright and Forest Lake are at a position where we feel it's safe for the school board to take a tour and others, we will be sure to to allow that. At this point, those two are not, not a position we feel it's safe to put, to put you in right now. I did want to update you on our budget. We are trending great with our budget and trending great with our projects. To date, we have spent 100, almost $200 million. We have borrowed $250 million to date, and we're sitting in 2021. And we have yet to raise a single tax dollar or millage on our bonds, based on our bond. So we're really kudos to our CFO, Dr. Miley, and Shelley Allen and their team and our bond attorneys. We've been very fortunate to, to, to borrow $200 million without a tax increase. So we're happy to report that. And then some other notes, costs are still high. The steel cost we got today for R and E was crazy. It was four times what it should be. But again, we are in budget, so that's great. The labor market is getting tighter. We're, we're still doing okay. But we know every, every labor market is crazy. Just try to go out to a restaurant to get something to eat. And right now, we don't have any impacts. Do want to remind you all, we do plan to submit our RFP for Phase Two, 23 projects in November. And we'll be happy to sit down with each of you to go over that prod, that process. So you're fully informed of what that process will look like. And then that design work will be, be in early 2022. That's all my update for tonight, Madam Chair. Any questions that I may answer?
Board, any questions? Ms. Mackey?
Mr. Anderson, I appreciate the consistent updates you give us. And of course, as a reminder, all of this information is available on the Richland Two website for people who want the details. And thank you for allowing us the opportunities to, to see what's going on along the way. I know a special note of appreciation that the community I'm sure will feel as Bethel Handberry and the infusion of history that's going into that school with regard to remembering its namesake and and members of the community. So I thought that was really special, but thank you for those opportunities.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, seeing no one else. Oh, Dr. Davis?
You know, I, I can't let it go without being said.
I was trying to, I was trying. No, I'm just kidding.
That I, I think it should be reemphasized and, and, and we realize that this can change. And I know I make Dr. Miley very nervous when I say this, but we've not raised taxes in this community at the barn, the, the money for our bond. And we made a promise and a commitment that we would keep that at a minimum, right? And, and so I, I need for us to under and recognize that that's a reflection not only of the, the board entrusting administration to do the work that we need to do, but also having the qualified staff to make it happen. So I do want to make sure that our community, those who are here, those who are watching, to understand that we do do things in premier ways. And that's in a premier example. We've been a national model about the, the ability to raise the money as far as the bond and how we've managed that. And that kudos goes out to our, our finance team for doing that. And I didn't want to, I didn't want that to be over, of that to be glossed over. And second, I do want to say to Mr. Anderson again, thank you. But let's make sure we reach out to the board and set up times that are available. Let's not wait for them to reach out. So if they want to get some more insight on what's coming ahead, we can go ahead and schedule those times at their.
Yes, sir. Ms. Avery Hart has been working on that.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. That is important. With everything going sky high, it's good for the community to know that we are really taking care of your, your bond money and not wanting to raise taxes on everybody. Okay, don't speak too quickly. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, moving on to 9.3 Proposed Policy Revision Policy, GCCAF. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have our Senior Chief for Human Research Sources, Ms. Sean Williams, who's coming before you this evening to bring to you a proposed policy revision to Policy GCCAF, which is Professional Staff Academic Leave. Mrs. Williams?
Thank you, Dr. Davis, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board. Tonight, I bring the proposed Policy GCCAF Professional Staff Academic Leave. The proposed revisions extend academically to classified employees, an option currently only available to certified employees. As proposed, classified employees seek an initial certification in a degree program in the educational field will be eligible for one semester of academic leave. Are there any questions in regard to Policy GCCAF?
Board, any questions? I'm just going to make a comment if there's no questions. I think that that's wonderful because in a time when we have a shortage of teachers and things like that, to have a policy like that, that encourages everyone to better themselves and move up to a higher level. I appreciate us doing that because that's important because we have to take care of all of our teachers and our certified people and give them those same opportunities. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we're moving on to 10.1 Draft Agenda Items for November 16, 2021. Dr. Davis?
Again, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, to our public that are in attendance and those who are home viewing. We are about to recover the November 16, 2021 regular scheduled board meeting, draft agenda items. And just as a reminder, we only have one board meeting in the month of July. I mean, month of, of, well, in July too, but in the month of November. And I believe in the month of December. So this will be our only regular scheduled board meeting for the month of, of November. So we would start that meeting at 5:30 with our traditional call to order, followed by our executive session. Right now, in draft, we have executive session items as student appeals and nothing else listed as of today. We are have come out of the executive session where we will start the regular scheduled board meeting. We'll have our inspirational moment and then we'll ask for the approval of our agenda. We'll follow, we'll asking for the approval of our consent agenda, followed by our public participation. We'll have voting on executive session items, which includes student appeals as of right now. Our unfinished business action requested will be what you just heard from Ms. Williams, which will be asking for approval of the Policy GCCAF, which is the Professional Staff Academic Leave. We'll have the new business action requested, which will be the approval of the proposed South Carolina School Boards Association's resolutions. Following that, we'll have new business, no action requested. We will give again the superintendent highlights. We'll do a policy revision for BID, Board Member Compensations and Expenses. We'll have our first quarter report, a report for our first quarter financial report. We'll have a report for our first quarter discipline report. And then we'll give an update on our start, school start times. Following that, we'll have and ask for the, we'll recover, review, I'm sorry, the draft agenda for the December 14th board meeting and then ask for the approval of that agenda. Then public participation, number two, board and superintendent comments, executive session two, if it's needed. And then voting on executive session two items if needed. If not, we will move to adjournment.
Okay, all right. May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda for the November 16th meeting? Ms. Mackey?
Move to approve the draft agenda items for November 16, 2021, board meeting.
Is there a second? Second by Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I don't want to change the agenda, but I would ask, if possible, if Ms. Mackey's our District Eight representative could talk about the South Carolina School Boards Association letter to the National School Boards Association and the response. I think there was some, a, a letter that was sent on behalf of South Carolina School Boards Association about the National School Board. Would you mind just giving us a public update on that?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to do that.
If we could just include that under the resolution since it's related to the South Carolina School Boards Association?
I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Scott?
Yes, thank you. Want to know, it doesn't have to be the next board meeting, but a future board meeting. I'd like to see us add Policy BD, which is the organization of the board, and also Policy BEDI, which is News Media Services at Board Meetings. And I see that we do have our attorney here tonight, so I'm not sure. I know he used to be a parent. I'm not sure if he still have kids in school. So I'm not sure if he's here as a parent or here serving as the board's attorney. So.
He's just here for observations.
So are we paying for that tonight?
No.
Oh, okay. Just checking. Wasn't sure. Okay. Wasn't sure I saw that, so I'd love to see.
It's free, Dr. Scott, free.
Okay. Free is good. So I would like to see that added to a future.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Scott. Anything else? Ms. Agostini?
Madam Chair, and I'm confused with this whole process, but I would like to have a pres, I, I move to add a presentation on the difference between critical race theory and culturally relevant teaching to our November board meeting.
Okay, that is, that is the motion. Yeah. Is that a motion, Ms. Agostini?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is that seconded?
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, you know, this has been a hot button for a lot of people in our community, in our state and across the country. Reading our board briefing in August, our administration gave a back-to-school in-service presentation to staff on the difference between critical race theory and culturally relevant teaching. And I think it'd be very important for the board to understand the difference as well as our community. So I would like to see it put on our agenda. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote on that. Yes. Take your time, Jill. Okay. I would like to take a point of privilege for just a second to just remind everybody for the public that Richland School District Two does not teach critical race theory. But we can, not saying that we can't discuss it, but we do not teach critical race theory, just for the record.
Not add it to the draft agenda, to put it on the agenda.
As a point of clarification, Madam Chair, are we not approving?
Yes, Ms. Mackey?
Are we not approving the draft agenda? Is that not the right verbiage? We are indeed approving the draft agenda, are we not?
We are approving the draft agenda, but I'm asking for it to be included on the agenda for the next meeting.
I understand. I was just saying that the accurate, the motion is accurate. It's for the draft agenda.
Madam Chair, I believe that.
Mr. Manning?
I, I believe that there was a, a motion on the table to approve the draft agenda. There was a second. Ms. Agostini then asked to add, to, to essentially amend or a secondary motion to the primary motion, which is where we are now. So we are voting just on Ms. Agostini's motion.
Correct.
For changing the original motion. So we're just voting on Ms. Agostini's motion.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Manning. That's a mouthful. We appreciate you. Is that correct? Okay. I think I might be. Okay, wait, wait a minute. Okay, it's on there. Okay, we will now take the vote electronically. Okay, motion passes six, yes, one, no. Okay, motion passes. Okay, now we will go back to the approval of the draft agenda.
Madam Chair, I have one more question, request.
Yes.
For a board briefing. I would like information regarding the Art II, I II Conference Center rentals from October 25, 2021 through what we have rented out or on the books through June 31, or excuse me, January 31, 2022.
Okay, you're asking for that to go into the board brief, Ms. Agostini?
Just in a board brief, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so passes six, two, one. Okay. Moving on to item, no, we gotta, I'm sorry, we have to go back and approve the draft agenda for the November 16, 2021 meeting. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair? We're voting on our primary motion.
Yeah, right, the primary motion, correct.
I would like to make a request or make a motion. I would like to make, to make a motion that.
I can't, I cannot hear you, Ms. um.
I would like to make a motion that we put Policy BEDB Board Agenda on the December 14, 2021 Agenda.
Okay. Which one? Because we had, is that not the same one that Dr. Scott said? Is, is that something different? I didn't say yours again. I can't, I can't hardly hear you. Say it again, please.
BEDB Board Agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Board Agenda.
Are you making a motion or you?
I did make a motion.
Okay, which policy is that, Ms. McFadden?
Board Agenda.
Board Agenda. Okay. All right, is that motion seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Agostini. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Manning?
Before I can vote on it, I would like to ask for clarification as to what the intent of adding that policy is, what, what change is being looked at or what discussion we want to have. I need to understand more before I can vote on it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manning. Ms. McFadden, would you like to clarify?
Yes, I would like to clarify that I would like there to be a look at the policy to determine if there's another way that we can go about putting agendas on the, on the, on the, putting items on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Manning?
I, I just want to, for the record, state that I, I don't want to support adding it. It's, we, we have gone through a lot of iterations in the time that I've been on the board. And it's not that I don't support board members being able to add. We, we now vote with the draft agenda. So the majority of the board does want to add an item, it can be added. And we, we just have to have some way for it to be done with the board chair, with the superintendent. And we've tried many different ways and it gets chaotic. And so I do think, in my opinion, at this point, we have the most democratic process that I've seen since I've been on the board with the idea that we can vote to add items with the whole board. So that, that's. that's just the reason why I'm going to vote against it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Mr. Manning?
Oh, wait a minute. Let's do it the right way. Say, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, may I address Mr. Manning?
Go ahead.
Mr. Manning, with all due respect, in the past, it was a different board. It is a new board, and it is a new time. And sometimes we need to go back and readjust what we thought was correct and fix it. I'm asking just to put it on the agenda. Now, whether or not we decide to change anything, or if anyone wants to change anything, there's an opportunity to at least look at it and address it. It was redone in, I think, let's see.
2019.
2019. That was before I was on the board, and I would like the opportunity to have a say or at least get my view out on the reason why.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Any other discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Dr. Scott?
Just want to add a comment. Thank you, Ms. McFadden, for adding that. As we look, we are the policymakers. So anytime a board member would like to bring a policy, seem like that would just be welcome, because we are the policymakers, and policies can't be changed unless a board member takes the initiative to bring the policy to the board, whether we approve it or disapprove it. I think that should just be a given when we come with policies. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion, Ms. Agostini?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Agostini?
Yeah, and I support and am grateful that Ms. McFadden brought it up as well. I'm receptive to new ideas, would like to hear what hers are. And as it stands, the way that we are doing it now is not following policy, but it's a practice. So if we're going to continue to do so, I'd love to make it a policy. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, we're in, we're in, okay. You said the December, or, I can't figure it out.
Yes, I just wanted to put it out there because of time constraints. We only have one other meeting, so I wanted to put it out there so that there's ample of time for us to know that this is what I want to do at that next meeting, because we only have-
The November meeting?
No, we only have one meeting in November.
I'm asking, you saying for November or December?
I want it to be on the December meeting, but I wanted to let it be known, because we only have one meeting in November for me to get it out there.
Okay. Okay, but I, okay, but we're looking at, I see what Dr. Davis is saying. We're voting on the November meeting at this current time, Ms. McFadden. Not quite ready for the December one, but thank you for putting that out there. And then what we can do is do like we always have done. You can put that in writing, and then we can address it that way also. Okay?
I just want to just say for a point of clarification, I'm looking for them, ensure that we're trying to be the best as line with Robert's Rules of Order. Right now, what's being discussed is the November 16th-
Right.
-draft agenda. We're talking about an item to be placed on the December agenda. That's not on the current. That's not what we can do. But I think when we get to the November board meeting, the November 16th board member, this same recommendation should come forth and vote, which clearly it has to support, sounds like it has to support to be placed on that December, that first board meeting or that only board meeting in December, when we do the November 16th board meeting. Because in that November 16th board meeting, we'll have the draft agenda for December.
That's what I-
And that's the agenda you want it on, correct?
That's what I want it on. So when the November 16th draft agenda is presented, it's already on there. So when we go through, you will see BEDB on the draft agenda. So when we get ready to approve the drafted agenda, it's already on there, just like, you know. Do you understand what I'm saying? Do you need more clarification?
No, I think I, I think I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. You would like to see that on the December meeting, and you wanted to bring it up now. We're clear. I got you.
So that it will be on the November draft agenda.
I got you. I got you. We're good. Okay, okay. All right, so let's go back to the, the, y'all are so wild tonight. I'm just confused. Let's go back to the approval of the draft agenda for the November 16th, 2021 meeting. Is that where we're at, board? Okay, good.
Yes, that's correct. With the, with the secondary motion or the amended motion from Ms. Agostini is included as part of this vote.
Yes, so, okay. So we're there. We're ready to vote? Okay, yes. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, we are on now 12.1. We don't need public participation, too. We're now at 13.1 board and superintendent comments. Okay, we'll start with Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to take this opportunity to take, or to thank all of those that came tonight to this meeting, those who are out in the parking lot watching, those that took the opportunity to speak to us tonight at public participation. Again, we do work for you. I'm disappointed. I walked upstairs to see that nobody's up there. So it is disappointing to realize that, you know, we couldn't accommodate a larger group of people. But thank you all again for coming tonight.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Agostini. Ms. McFadden?
Just want to say thank you to everyone for coming out. I look forward to seeing you guys, and y'all have a good weekend.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Cheryl Caution-Parker?
I'd like to say, is her name Leila Williams? Inspirational moment? I thought that was just outstanding. And I think it's a great idea for us to start focusing on the students in the district for inspirational moments. I think that is a wonderful idea, and I support that heartily. Also, thank you again, Dr. Davis, as I always do about the highlights. And I like to focus on the core values. A lot of great things happening out here in the district that we just need to make sure everybody's aware of. Instead of always something negative. And good reports, as usual. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Scott?
Thank you to all who presented this evening. Thank you so much, especially for the rezoning. I think some of my colleagues mentioned that earlier. That's always a tough decision, but a lot go into that. So I want to just say thank you for coming out to the meetings, and thank you, Will, for presenting that. I have a few questions for clarity, and then I also have comments. One is, I know Dr. Davis mentioned Dr. Grant, but I want to make sure I'm clear. Is that Dr. Grant or Attorney Grant? How should we be addressing? Dr. Davis?
I address her Dr. Grant.
So is she Dr. Grant or is she Attorney?
That's how I address her.
Okay, so if we can get the right clarification for that.
Well, she has a juris doctrine, so I-
Okay, so she goes by doctor. Okay, I wasn't sure, because sometimes when you have a attorney, or normally addressed by attorney and not doctor, so I want clarification on that. The other thing is, we do have one of our former board members here, Craig Plank. So I want to thank Craig for coming out this evening and being a part of this meeting. We do miss you as well. Just want to talk quickly about student appeals. When I first got on the board, when we heard student appeals, we had the opportunity for the hearing officer to come into the room to address concerns and questions and for clarity of students, because I truly believe in students having their due process, and I also believe in making sure that we are informed when we make decisions. Because whatever decisions we make, it goes into effect immediately that night. Don't want to vote on a student being expelled when we missed out on some information, according to our policy or practice. Just want clarification, since we do have an attorney here who's doing observation. Hopefully, he can get that to us later with the information on, is it illegal for a hearing officer to come into executive session to address questions, so we can make that sound decision when we come to students? I know Craig Plank, I remember this, when he was on the board, it was always welcome for the hearing officer to come in, so we can have those questions and have that addressed. So I'd like to see if we are within our rights to do that. If we are, I'd love to see that back in place. Also, want to talk about the location of our meetings, and I think Madam Chair asked me to hold off on this. I'm not sure if some of my colleagues received letters from students today, but I received eight, a total of eight, letters, emails from students. And they had complaints about the fact that they're in class, and they all came from Spring Valley. So I don't know if they got together and decided they wanted to write these letters, or they are students of some of the parents that speak, not sure. Really, don't matter. Doesn't matter. They wrote a letter, and I responded. And their question was, how could we, in this room, allow only 20 participants, but they're in classes at Spring Valley with 28 and 31 students in a class, and it's much smaller than this? And we're asking them to abide to the COVID standards in their small classrooms, but yet here, we limit it to 20, and only 10 being able to participate. So that was deep, because they wanted a response. And you know how students are. When they write you, they expect a response. I even called a few, and we had conversations. And I truly understand where they're coming from. So I'm going to ask my colleagues to consider moving the board meetings back upstairs. And if they're events, this is R2I building. We have the first priority here for our parents and our constituents. I'd love to see us move back upstairs, because even when we were there, the room was not full, and it was able to accommodate our students. I also like to see every parent who signs up to participate, that they are given the opportunity and not limit that to 10. Because again, we work for them. We work for the parents. Few other things. I know the security was an overload tonight, and I do appreciate that, because we always say safety is our number one concern. Just want to know, and if Dr. Molly is here, who's standing in for Dr. Molly, if you can give me or give the board and the board briefs the figures of what we paid tonight to have extra security, based on what we normally pay, and what was the need to have so much security here tonight? The final comment I'd like to make, I received a few telephone calls from county council members. And one thing they asked is the setup of how we sit. And I didn't quite understand it, but when they shared it with me, it made a whole lot of sense. They shared that their administrator, who were feeling like a Dr. Davis position, sits with the faculty and staff, and the only people that sit up front are just the board members. So I thought about that. So I reached out to five of the school districts, and I asked, what is your setup? Three said that the superintendent sit with them, and two of the school districts said that the superintendent sit out. Then I started thinking about that thing. I don't have any biological kids, but I was blessed to now have a bonus daughter. So with that, when I was growing up, my mom never called me her best friend. And she never did that because she didn't want us to think we were on equal grounds. And I think sometimes with the setup, I don't want people to get confused, because the board and superintendent is not on equal grounds. So I'm going to ask the board for consideration that we move Dr. Davis' seat with the faculty and staff, and let the board just be up here, because we don't want any confusion of who's the boss. We're Dr. Davis' boss, and Dr. Davis is the boss of the faculty and staff. So I would like that to be considered. And with that, again, Craig Plank, thank you for being here tonight. You so much sunshine. I needed to see that. So thank you so much, and everyone have a great night.
Okay. Ms. Mackey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With regard to the superintendent highlights, I appreciate it's always good to hear about the celebration of successes with regard to our students and our employees, and occasionally, community events that tie into Richland Two. It's always good to hear that. Dr. Grant, congratulations on that most deserved award. I know that we were at the table, finding ways for all people to feel included long before it was any kind of initiative that was, that was supported or by other people in the state who piled on. So congratulations. I know that you worked very hard with every aspect of Richland Two, so I appreciate that. And for the people who are in this room who chose to be here, thank you. For those who've got to be here, thank you. We are a team. We work together. I know, good business practice. People feel that they're working together, not for anyone. So for everyone who is working as a team in Richland Two, we get the teachers, principals, administrators, superintendent, people around this room, we work together. We work cohesively as a team, not for anybody. So thank you all for being here. Y'all be safe. Be blessed.
Mr. Manning?
Yeah, I echo the sentiment. I think we should consider increasing the number of folks that come to our board meetings. I think when I hear 30 in a classroom, it makes sense to me that we could potentially mirror that with our folks here. Regarding the number of staff here, we've repeatedly had board members asked to make sure that we always have appropriate staff to answer questions on the spot. That's been a repeated and adamant request from board members. So staff, thank you for being here to help fulfill the request on behalf of the board to do that. And I also was going to recognize Mr. Plank, and I think it's very apropos, Mr. Plank, I think you actually coined the term Core Four. And at the time that you coined it, it was around our four character, our four strategic initiatives of learning, character, community, and joy. And I appreciate the fact that I saw the board return to those four, four cornerstones of our district today, and that we all work well together. I thought we had a great business meeting of the board. I appreciate the community's support. I mean, we do, this is a business meeting, and we do need to have a certain level of decor, while still certainly hearing from you and listening to what your requests are. So I was excited, Mr. Plank, that we could return to the Core Four and what it was originally intended to be, which is around those four cornerstone. So thank you to the board and the community for that joint effort in doing those things. As far as the number of public folks that come to speak, it is in policy that it's 30 minutes, and that it gets split up the way it is. So that will need to be a policy adjustment. And so that's something, if we want to consider it, we need to be put on a board agenda for reconsideration, to change the number of people and the, and/or the amount of time or the way it gets divvied. So that's something that would have to be considered. I know some boards do set the time, and, you know, they'll set 30 minutes, and if you get 40 people, then you have a sliver of time. And so that's always been kind of a back and forth, to make sure we give enough time to each individual, so that we can truly understand what the request is or what you're trying to say, at the same time, not have a six-hour board meeting. So it's a fine balance there of accomplishing both of those things. Madam Chair, thank you. I thought it was a great meeting today. Appreciate your leadership and running the meeting. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank y'all.
Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board and to our community, just to address one quick issue. When we look at the CDC and DHEC recommendations and guidelines as results from difference between classrooms and other spaces, one of the recommendations or the guidance that was provided is that student-to-student contact, you can have three feet of social distancing. Adult-to-adult, the recommendation is six feet social distancing. So it's one of the reasons why you can have more people or less people in a space that's full of adults versus students. We can agree or disagree. The recommendations are in black and white. The guidances are in black and white, and we can interpret it the way that they, that we feel free to do so. I know it's difficult as leaders to make some very tough decisions, that everyone's not going to agree with every decision that you make. And I think someone stated it earlier, and I think the gentleman just left with this, that was what we signed up for, and not to shy away from very difficult and tough decisions, whether those people agree with those decisions or not. You have to make the decisions that you think are aligned and was best for the masses and the groups in which you, the group of students that, and families that we represent. I've asked a question, and I asked myself, and I've asked my staff to ask this question of themselves. What is at stake? Where we currently are, what is at stake? This is a school district that has had a stellar reputation, a reputation of being a high-quality, high-functioning, high-effective school district. And so our character and our dignity, who we are, and how we are viewed is always at stake. And so my question I ask myself is, what am I going to do to ensure that that stays intact? What is my contribution to that going to be? And I understand that neither, either these things are going to be achieved- And I understand that neither, either of these things are, are going to be achieved with any level of ease. It is important for us to understand that we are never going to be measured in times of our convenience and agreements. But we're going to be measured when things are difficult, when things are uncertain and in adversity. So when people look at who we are, our character, how we represent ourselves, that's important. Again, my, my responsibility here is not to be in agreeance with everyone. I speak to all constituents or all families, as I like to call them. And so there are individuals who are here who have positions and there are individuals who are not here that have positions. There are individuals who are fortunate to be here and there are individuals who can't be here because they have work and other responsibilities. But there are twenty eight thousand students in this school district. And everyone has a thought and opinion about how something should be done as relates to their children. We put in leadership roles and leadership positions to make decisions that we think are best for the entire organization moving forward. So I don't, I want to dispel, in particular for those, because I've spoken to many of them outside of school board meetings and outside of office hours regarding their thoughts about this. But there is a whole three hundred and sixty degree view. So we have to ask ourselves, when the last time did we talk to someone with a difference of opinion of ours? And how do we consider their opinions and how their thoughts and feelings and opinions about things impact us? Or are we just speaking to one group of individuals? One group, whether it's on Facebook, whether it's in Twitter, whether it's in our neighborhoods, whether in our communities, whomever that is. Our responsibility as leaders is to have that three hundred and sixty degree view and connectivity with those individuals. We don't always agree with them. They're not going to always agree with us. But we have to be, we have to listen to both sides. But most importantly, when we have in those interactions, I'll continue to ask. And I'm so thankful to all of you all tonight for your demeanor and your civility during this board meeting. I, 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 I am. I'm, I'm, I was disheartened the last time in our last board meeting. But I'm so thankful that you all came and you presented your case in such a respectful way. And I appreciate, I'm appreciative of that because it's, it's important, the civility, the way we interact, the way we disagree. Our children, our students are watching. And I do have the privilege of having raised three children in this school district. And my actions, regardless of how anyone wants to measure them, my children watch these board meetings just like everybody else's child. And I have an expectation of how I want them to conduct themselves in adversity. That's my expectation for them. So I'm the first model, as many of you are, for as many parents are for their children, those who are watching, those who are here. The first model, how do you conduct yourself in adversity? How do you conduct yourself when your character is questioned? How do you conduct yourself when you are, you feel pushed or attacked? How do you conduct yourself? And I just appreciate the way that we all are working towards it. And I ask and applaud you all. Continue to do that. Continue to be the answer and solution to how we fix this issue in our community. We do not want a divisive community. We can disagree without being divisive. And let's continue to do that, continue to pray for one another, continue to take care of one another, continue to listen to one another without being divisive. It's possible. And it will happen if we work and we interact with each other with that intent in our heart. For reconciliation, not division. And only you know what seed you plant. But reconciliation seeds don't grow from divisive, recreation, reconciliation plants don't grow from divisive seeds. You can't plant divisive seeds and ask for reconciliation. So I plan to plant reconciliation seeds. I plan to plant seeds that bring us together. We don't all have to eat that fruit, but we can all, we know that someone will, will, will eat from it and that fruit will continue to bear more fruit. So continue to do the same. I thank you all for your attention tonight and I thank you all for your participation.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Davis. I'm going to first start off by saying kudos to all the award recipients and all the great things we have going on in the district. And also congratulations, Dr. Grant, on your award. That's a huge achievement. We appreciate that. You're a fine example for the district. Having said that, I, I love what I saw tonight. I love what I saw tonight. This is, as you're, as a chair, you're going to get labeled as a dictator, all kind of things like that. But this is a hard seat to sit in. But as Dr. Davis put it, you have to sit in this seat and you can't be afraid to make the decisions that are sometime popular and sometimes they're not popular. But here's the thing, I do want it to, I want to stress to everyone that it is exceedingly important to me personally that everybody has an opportunity to speak your mind. I have no problems with you having a different opinion from me because you're human. You can have whatever opinion you want to have and I can have mine. But what I do appreciate is, is that when we come together as a meeting of the minds and talk civilly with each other and we respect each other and we don't try to tear each other's character down. I'm somebody's mother. I'm somebody's grandmother too. I deserve the same respect that you all would want me to give you if you were sitting in this position. So that's all I ask. And in return, I'm going to give you that same respect and give you the format to say what you like to say. But there are rules. There are policies. And as the chair, I have to adhere to those and I'm going to adhere to those. But that doesn't mean I want to stifle anyone. Again, we don't all have to agree and that's okay. But as we must, as I used to say when I taught school years ago, we don't all have to hold hands and sing kumbaya, but we have to respect each other. And, and I saw that tonight and I appreciated that tonight. I really did. This has had, this has been a very hard seat to sit in, but I love what I do. I love this community. I'm a product of Spring Valley High School. My children are products of this district. So this is important to me. I don't just sit here because I don't have anything else to do. I sit here because I love what I do. I know what we should do. I know the things that can improve and help move this district forward and stay premier. That's why I'm here. You know, it, it is, like I said, please don't ever make the mistake. And I know there's a lot of social media out there saying this and that, but I have completely tuned all that out. Because what I'm going to do as I sit here is I'm going to do what I think is right. I'm going to listen to everybody. My opinion can be swayed and changed depending on what you say and how it's presented. I do think I'll agree with several of my colleagues. I'd like to see more people participate in the meeting. I have no issue with that, whether you say what I want you to say or not. But some of you haven't even asked me what I want to say. You're assuming what I'm saying. So what I'm saying to you is that you, you have to ask people like Dr. Davis said, what is their opinion on something? Don't assume. So having said that, please know that we want you here. I want you here because I like to hear what you want to say to this board. We have you. Again, we may not agree, but this is an open meeting to the parents. But we must do it and I am going to insist upon that we do it in a respectful way, just like I would when I was a teacher in a classroom. We can't, we, you can't hear each other if you're arguing. It's not possible. So having said that, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, board members. For, thank you, Dr. Davis. Thank you, faculty. Thank you, staff. Everyone who was here, police officers, security, thank y'all because you had to take your time to come. So I appreciate you all. And with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manning. Any discussion? Seeing none, meeting is?
Need to call for the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Call for the vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Okay. Have a blessed evening.